Let's call the meeting to order. Let's take a moment for silent prayer and reflection, please. Okay, Teri, if you could call the roll, please.
Pat Rooney.
Here.
Alan Ward.
Here.
Kathy Cox here. Nicole Cohen here. John Masken.
Here.
Let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will entertain a motion to review and accept the agenda for this session.
I make a motion to review and accept the agenda.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Alan Ward?
Yes.
John Masken?
Superintendent Sire, it's all yours.
Good afternoon, President Masken and members of the board. I would like to review the proposed agenda for our meeting next week on the 13th. We'll start with call of the public and our recognition of visitors. Currently, we have LHCEA as the only item under number three. On the consent agenda, we start with the minutes from the sessions on February 20th and the work session on February 13th. Have any questions on any of the minutes? Item 4 dot 1 dot 2 is the recommendation for the purely of the agenda. And then 4 dot 1 dot 3 is the personnel report. Any questions on the personnel report? Item four under the consent agenda are the gifts and donations. Item six is the policy exhibit IJNDVDC, which provides some changes in relation to our administrative database changes. So, for example, we're no longer using Power School. So, we have just used the generic terms for student management, finance, and personnel software. That way, we don't have to change it every time it changes. Starting into new business, the first item on the agenda is a request for new titles for our career and technical education courses. This is an area that is sort of interesting from the standpoint that, for example, we just changed the technical theater class, and now we have from ADE the change to stagecraft. And so, what we did include as the backup information was the CTE draft of all of the different program titles. And we identified the name changes by the CIP codes. So, we can identify the classes that are changed. And then behind that, what you see were the previous course titles for 2018. Again, these are to reflect industry standards. Item 6.2 is a request from Principal Becker to approve the marching band, to be able to hold the marching band class at 7:00 in the morning. The rationale behind this is that students who are in the marching band are also in the musical concert band. And so, by virtue of having the marching band elective, they are unable to take a second elective that they need. Often, they would prefer to take foreign languages or some of those things. And so, this is a one semester course that would allow them to meet at 7:00. It also would help them in their practices because when they practice after school, they're conflicting with athletics and so forth. And also provides a cooler time for them to practice, so.
One quick question on this. We recently changed the time that students can access the high school to 7:15. Does this now make it 7:00?
It will for that course, and the band room is at a position where they can access the band room without accessing the whole campus. 6.3 is a recommendation that the board adopt a district curriculum philosophy statement. This is the statement that was developed by our curriculum subcommittee for the board, and that includes a statement that incorporates our mission statement. And it also provides a definition when we refer to the term critical thinkers. This was the work that resulted in our curriculum committee recommending that the board consider going back and defining some of the terms in the mission statement, which we'll come forward to the board at another time. Yes, sir.
Everybody has different wording, but I just want you to take a look at where it says "our district provides." And I question whether that shouldn't possibly say "our district will provide."
We actually talked about that. I'm looking too, because if we say "will provide," then do we need to say "will feature"? Or are we going to do that? Or are we going to do it in the future? I think that was the conversation.
Well, you know, I think, just my personal feeling is "will feature" is valid also because we may feature high academic standards today, and six months from now, that fail off, fall off. But if our philosophy says we will feature, we will be forced to reexamine it. But that's whatever. It's just per biology, that's all.
Sure. For me, I am fine with either way, as long as it's parallel. This is the board's statement, and so certainly whatever the board recommends will be.
I think it's fine the way it is. Once it gets going, it, this is what we're telling, once the year starts into the future, we're just telling perhaps Pat's parents that this is what we do, rather than what "will" sort of suggests in the future. And I'm okay with the way it's worded, not about everybody else.
Mrs. Cohen, did you have anything to add?
I like it as is. I like that you, that we have a definition for critical thinkers in there, too. I appreciate that, because everybody has their own idea of what that means. What do you think, Pat?
I think "provides" makes it a little more forceful than, hey, we're going to do this, and it's going to be there. That's the way I feel.
Question item 6.4, we actually have had some recent developments on, so I am going to ask Mr. Baker.
Well, I will just, I'll just briefly state that we are waiting for some clarifying numbers, so we're going to hold off. We earlier today sent out some documentation to you, but Teri did recall because we got some late information today from the consultant that we're waiting for him to clear up for us. So, I'm hoping that we'll have this documentation back out to you by Friday so that we can go forward with this. We just want to make sure the numbers are correct.
So, what we're actually hoping to do then, for the audience, is to award a bid for our One Fiber Bill and Internet service.
Can I clarify what that is?
Absolutely.
Because I see David going, "What?"
I'll figure it out.
WAN would be wide area network. And so, our network lives in different buildings around town, and those are interconnected with fiber optic cables. So, that would be WAN or wide area network, like a local area network, or a LAN would be inside of a single building. What this will do is this will increase bandwidth between the buildings. And also, we'll do it through E-rate money. And as we get into the E-rate money, our bandwidth provider wishes suddenly, we'll see our costs go down on providing bandwidth from where we currently are. So, we're going to spend some E-rate money. We're going to spend, about 20% of the project will be out of district dollars. And at the end of it, what we're going to wind up getting is a reduction in our monthly return cost by increasing the bandwidth. What does that allow you to do? Put it to you, put it to you in a way that you might understand it. It's kind of like we're going from dial-up to DSL, or dial-up to cable mode. It's, it's going to make it a little bit faster between points. And so, for instance...
We can have everybody online at the same time.
Well, and, and for instance, on a current capacity where we're, we're at 1 gigabit per second, we're going to go to 20. So, it's, it's literally an opening of the floodgate. Is it going to be as fast as you see in the same building? No, because that runs at, we say we're going to go from 1 to 20, point to point inside of a, a single building is generally 1,000. So, but when, on the stuff where we need to go, say, from the middle school to the high school, or the elementary schools to the high school to access, it's going to help out greatly going from 1 to 1. Does that help?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, is this a, Denise, are you handling this? Is this a clarification on all the, what the capability is and all that?
That's what we had sent out earlier that I recalled. I'm going to be giving more information out on probably Friday.
Oh, okay, okay. But, but that'll tell us everything, it's light people we need to know, right? Including the cost. Okay, real good. Thank you.
All right, item number 6.5, this is an item that came forward from Mr. Murray. We have, as you all are aware of last boarding, had requests to consider selling the property, and the Realtor was referred back to Mr. Murray. So, this item is brought forward at a request to sell our property. We can do that if the property appraises for less than $50,000 without calling for an election. At this point, they are looking to offer less than $50,000 and would ask that we actually pay for the appraisal and any related expenses. The second item that's related to that is 6.6. In the conversation about selling the land, we also are bringing back the item to exchange the land, because that is also an option that was brought up in the conversation. So, this is back on the agenda for the board to consider again in light of that conversation and presentation by the Realtor.
When, when Mike brought it in, and I was, I happened to be sitting there when Mike brought it in, the reason why we put them both up is, is we had this come up now a couple of times, once as an agenda item, and once in a call to the public. And I think that it's only fair that we get to a resolution with, with people that are doing it. I've looked at some of the background on this, and I'm not sure that I like either one of the options at this point, for a variety of reasons.
So, since they, are two different ways to dispose of this, this lot, the lot, what happens if we vote yes on 6.5, and then we get to 6.6, or vice versa, we vote no on 6.5, and then?
If we vote, if we vote no on 6.5, we would then vote on 6.6, and it should be a contrary vote.
Okay. So, if we vote on, yes on 6.5, then we?
Not supposing how we would vote, but I would imagine based on that, it would be a contrary vote.
I look at it a little different, so I don't think we have a choice on how we vote on it. I don't think these should have been presented without the appraisals being done and us knowing the price of the property. For several reasons, you not only have to consider the sale, you have to consider the transfer, you have to consider the property value increase, depending on where it's located, and you can't do any of that without appraisal.
Which will be Pat's?
And I don't think that if, if there's a businessman who wants to make a trade or make a buy, that we should have any obligation to appraise the property at all.
What will then agree?
Well, we're not doing an appraisal at all. We're, we're deciding if we're going to do anything with these two. And then, once we make that decision, then based on what his expectations are of us, is if we choose to sell it, we would be then obligated to produce an appraisal so that we would know what it's worth, and we can know if we can just sell it, or if we have to go out to an election to sell it. And then, on top of that, if that doesn't go through, then on, on the other option that we have is we can do the exchange. And on the exchange, he, he has indicated historically that he would pay for that appraisal. I think in looking at recent history on Swanson, I don't think that we're going to have an appraisal under $50,000. That's just my thought process.
Let me ask you this. Has anyone looked into, all it would require is calling a Realtor and seeing what properties are selling for on that area?
I actually looked at his property that he's recently purchased, so I know he's paid for the three lots that he owns.
Okay, then, I mean, that's a public record.
That's right. I just went to the successor's office, looked it up.
Exactly.
And he's paid $50,000 piece. So, so what he's, what it looks like he's trying to do here, Pat, is he's, he's put a number in to us. Did he make an actual offer?
He did.
What, what was his offer?
$46.
So, he's trying to come in low to skirt the election law. And I don't necessarily care for that.
But his, his, his offer, though, it, it's the appraisal that will determine whether or not the election law applies, so his, he can offer...
That's what I'm saying. We're sitting here talking about things that we have no ability of knowing what the appraisals are going to yield. And you wouldn't run a business this way, you just wouldn't know it.
If I may interject, the last time that we considered this, one of the issues that came up is that while he will do the appraisal, the expectation is by him doing the appraisal, if it appraises that his property that he wants to trade for is higher, then we must do the exchange.
There is a...
What I believe, I've heard from Mr. Ward, is that you would prefer that the, the interested party do the appraisals, and then come to us with an offer to either sell it or trade with those in advance.
That's what I'm saying. We should not be dependent on making a sale or trade just because he, he did an appraisal. As a businessman, he has an obligation to appraise the property and say, "This is the deal I'll give you." And then, we either accept it or don't accept it. But right now, this is a pig in a polk.
Unfortunately, we have to, even with advice from counseling, that we have to be very careful as to how we do that. That's kind of what the direction of this conversation went months ago, when we were proposing the, just the simple land trade. At that time, there were a couple other ideas on the table, and that's why the, that's why the agenda item actually was voted down, because we couldn't proceed as the discussion was, was occurring. And there were many ideas. Unfortunately, we can't ask him to go, to go spend his own money on an appraisal and then allow us to determine whether or not...
Yeah, but see, we're not, we're not the ones who want this due.
I agree.
We can't ask him to do it, but if he doesn't do it, we don't even have to listen to what he says.
I agree. But we do, we are bound, though, by the tram, by the land exchange, that if we do vote that as, as the, the conditions are on any type of land swap, that the individual who is soliciting the land swap would be the one who purchases the appraisal. And they're the ones that actually go out and, and purchase and order the appraisal. But the condition to that is, there's, there's a condition to that, that if that appraisal comes back at equal or greater value, his property compared to ours, then we must enter into that transaction. We can't at that time say, "Well, thank you for the information, but we're not interested at this time." If he goes out and engages in the appraisal based on a land swap deal, we must follow through with, with the conditions of that land swap. And if it comes in...
But if we approve the land swap, but what I'm saying is, in a normal, a normal business situation, he would walk up here and he would say, "I've appraised these three pieces of property. This is my piece, this is this piece, and this is the piece we want to trade. Will you move a land swap?" And at that point, we have firm numbers to make a vote and make a decision. We don't have to tell him to do anything. In a normal business operation, he would present those facts to us.
But this isn't a normal business operation.
It's governmental.
And, and so, and so, the question is, is do we want to move forward with the sale where we would pay for the appraisal and move forward with that, and potentially risk going to a public election and incurring the fees therein, or to sell it and the piece of property? Do we want to swap it, or do we just want to say, "Thank you for the information, thank you for trying, trying to work with us, but we're not interested in doing anything at this point." Those are really our options.
If we knew the property was $3,000, all up and down that street, we, we wouldn't really have, this, this wouldn't be so much of a gamble, but because the property is right there at the $50,000 mark, if we spend the money and it becomes, and it's $50,000 that it's appraised at, that transaction, that deal with him, becomes non-existent now. We have to actually go out to the public, have an election to have them authorize the sale of that land.
$8,000 public, too, to do that.
Yeah, then you're looking at...
That we pay for.
That we would pay for, that is much, much more than what that property is even worth.
Yeah, the other thing is, is that the lots on Swanson are, unless there's been a married-up lot, are generally the 50 by 250 standard commercial lots. To me, and this is just me, whether, whether this is, this holds true in appraisal or not, I would think the only ones that would have the additional value were the ones where they had the city parcel in between them, where they had that natural walkway where you could potentially annex the land, or, or something along that line that would hold an additional dollar value. And that's, that's in talking with, with developers and those types of people, historically, they said that, that, that that would add to the value. And if you look at the parcel map, what he has is close, but nothing is actually up on, onto that, that breezeway that I would, I would probably target at 18 and 19. So, so I don't know that I like either one of those. I don't know if I want to sell it or swap it. I think, I think long-term thinking about where the district is and the value of land and so on, I think I would just sit back and hold. That's my thought.
And the agenda items are now there so that we can, we owe, we owe it to at least this, this individual to say, "Here's, here's, here's our, where we are." And I don't want to string him along, and I don't think any of you do either. I know you don't. So, I think this is just going to allow that Realtor and her client to know exactly where, where we are and what our thoughts are on it.
Vote it up, vote it down. Let's vote it down.
So, when we're looking at this map, because the number is, what, 112, 140?
Yeah, we have 140.
141.
141. 141 is our lot.
So, that's where you've got impermanent schools?
Yes.
And then, so it's just that one lot above 17? Or is it that whole lot?
He wants...
17, 141, when you're looking at the map?
Yeah, 17, 141 is that whole piece.
That, both sides?
Both sides, that dotted one.
So, that dotted line that's going through it, is that what we're talking about, is the natural walkway?
No.
Okay.
So, so when you get to lots 18 and 19, just as a first instance?
That thin one?
That really thin piece in there, and then there's another one down the way there. That's the walkway that the city owns.
Okay.
It's probably not developed at all at this point, like the ones on McCullough are, but it's there.
And he currently owns?
39, 40, and 44. Originally, they proposed swapping with either 139 or 144.
144 puts us in the same position.
Correct, just, just on the other side.
Right.
Up the street a lot.
And I, I look at it, I think he's trying to set up a walkway in, in what he's doing. I just kind of look at how he's, how he's strategically trying to push us. He's trying to set up that.
Yeah, because then his only obstacle would be 142.
Well, and, and if I'm reading this correctly, without having access to the database, 142 and 143 are tagged as being married.
Ah, and those straddle that walkway.
Correct. So, it looks like he's keying up something around that walkway area.
Well, I guess that's nothing to do with tonight, but it just seems to me, I wonder if this law that stipulates that we can't deal with, we can't, we're kind of, our hands are tied for anything where the price is over $50,000 in this day and age, that's, that, maybe that law needs to be changed because we're, and I don't have to explain to you, but maybe that's another avenue that we could get that law changed and have more flexibility.
I, I would say to you that the district is actually fairly property-rich.
Okay.
McCullough, when he founded Lake House City, was very generous.
With school sites, right.
So, for instance, up by my house, just as something to pick on, on a Biden-Durham way, there's a school site. I don't think we'll ever put a school site up on in Durham. I personally just can't fathom that. We could, if we had to go out for election on, on something, take this piece of property and put it as an also ran with a bigger piece of property. Or we could wait until this was the Lynchpin piece of property in somebody else's project and put it out that way, where somebody was highly interested, would look at an appraisal window. Let me just go a little bit above that. The reason why the law exists is for us to maximize what we get out of the property that we own and act as to go sell it to, to somebody who makes us an offer. And it's not a bad thought. I mean, the Bennett family, from looking at the history on the lot, are the ones that donated to us. And I think, I think that, that understanding the law and the reason for it, I, I think it's a good law. I'm not sure, again, I would kind of agree with you. I think $50,000 is not officially a low number in this day and age, but, but I understand...
But that's a taxpayer protection, I think, too.
I, I understand, I understand the reasoning behind it.
I do, too.
What you just brought up is a good point, you know. We haven't talked about selling that other property, and before this came up, had we had any discussions whatsoever about what we were going to do with the property down there?
We have. We discussed it the last time we swapped property.
No, no, I mean, before the offer was made, did we ever discuss?
Yes.
Let's get rid of this piece of property.
Well, no, we discussed it in terms of, we swapped it a couple years ago, so, but we, we had no designs on it a couple of years ago when we made a swap, is what I'm saying. So, yes, it has come up before, but there's been no designs on it whatsoever, and that's why we just made an even swap, but...
Well, and again, this has nothing to do with anything. But I'm really interested in advancing ASU here. And anything that benefits ASU and helps ASU is where they're able to provide other services, such as, I don't know what this gentleman wants to do, housing, I have no idea, that would benefit those students, is only going to benefit our students in the long run. So, I am a little tender or negotiable, or, you know, we can, I mean, I know this is capitalism, let's get the, you know, the maximum amount that we can at some point in time out of this lot. I understand that. But I just expressed, you know, my thoughts about ASU and helping them advance what they're doing for the town and our students.
You mentioned that you were going to go out and look at the lots, or?
We, that was Mr. Ward's idea, and then later, he said that he...
Everybody said they knew where they were, so, yeah.
The, and that's not a bad thought process either, Kathy. I, I see the, I see the, the point and the wisdom in that. I will tell you that, to my knowledge, though, when ASU wants to put in dormitories, ASU goes out and hires a private company to develop the dormitories, and then generally does the leaseback. leaseback against it. They're, they're not putting in dormitories on, on the commercial land like this, which is designed for storefront more than it is for anything else. This is more than likely, and I'm looking at the zoning, this is more than likely C1 knowing where it is.
Okay. I guess I had heard that this would somehow benefit ASU, you see, well-
Well, I see a lot of tax dollars benefiting ASU, to be honest. I see us fighting in our M and O budget against tax dollars that are going to fund ASU. So my first concern is not ASU, I'm just going to be clear.
I understand.
And our city does a lot for ASU that they're not able to do for us, so to speak. So, the focus is pretty much ASU, I think, our focus. This is just my opinion, needs to be on, like, Kathy, so you're right.
Mrs. Fox, though, I, I think you, they, actually, the Realtors said that in our meeting, that this was what it was going to be used for.
Okay.
We hadn't anything except for the Realtors saying that, and we didn't know why that was something.
But this is private-
That's probably what I heard.
This is private enterprise, and maybe, maybe he gets this rezoned for apartments or condos or something along that. But this is, make no mistake, at this point, it's a private business, it's a selfish, selfish endeavor, and, and-
More power to him.
Right. It doesn't mean that we have to sell anything or swap anything in that process.
I get the sense that instead of what's the office offer, yes or no, we're slowly talking ourselves into what can we do with this property?
No.
And this is a one-time offer by one individual, and there's no doubt, when he locks in for these lots, his value's going to explode. Our value, we don't know, and without appraisals, I just, I don't think we should vote. I mean, I think we should vote, but I don't think we should consider it.
Mike, didn't you say that if it, if it is over fifty thousand, it has to go out for a vote?
Correct.
Which you said would cost eighty thousand dollars?
I said that, but that's just based on our bond and override that could have been-
Okay, but what I'm saying is, if that's the case, I mean, I would hold him onto that property until it becomes a lot more expensive. But at the same time, you know, you're looking at, you're looking at a narrow piece of property that on its own, if you expect it to accelerate to that value, something really is going to have to happen there. But under no circumstances if we have to have a vote for eighty and get fifty or whatever-
We'll never-
That would be just nonsensical.
Even engage in that.
The only time you could do that, as I believe Mr. Ward suggested, is if you have multiple pieces of property and you know that the values that are priced at fifty thousand dollars-
Right, and then you attach it, and you say, "This is part of this bigger deal."
Correct.
And the, the only other option in selling a property, if it's selling to a private party, we have to go to vote. If it's selling to another government agency, it does not have to go to a public vote, which is what occurred with the Cypress property in the city.
Right.
On the, to Pat's point, I mean, somebody can come along tomorrow and offers sixty thousand for the lot. Our hands are tied, unless it's a government agency. So, I mean, I, I think our hands are tied, and we have an opportunity to, to sell it, and otherwise, I don't see what we're going to do with it as time passes by.
I, I just don't see it appraising for under fifty. I just, I, I don't see that, especially when he's bought three lots in, in recent history that have recorded sales at fifty thousand-
Okay.
-in the same block.
Prices are up right now, so.
Yeah.
Well, to Al's point, I, I really think it would be wise for us to wait until the appraisal comes.
The only, the only other thing would be, it's been traded once before, is do we keep trading it up to increase the value of our property? You know, if it looks like it's another piece that's larger, whether that's important or not, I don't know, but I think that's where the, the trade law allows us to actually increase the value of our property through trading, so is there, you know, potential for that?
Mike, what do you recommend we do?
Yeah, they'll stay him on the hot seat.
Personally, I, I don't think the risk of, of paying for an appraisal, knowing that the property value is awfully close to the fifty thousand dollar mark, I, I'm not one that would take that risk. If, if the property, like I mentioned before, all up and down that block was thirty thousand dollars, then we knew, we would know that the money spent for the appraisal, it was going to go through, if we wanted to sell it, we'd spend six hundred dollars, a thousand dollars, or whatever it was on the appraisal, plus whatever applicable closing costs are, and, and we would have some money out of it. We would, we would get rid of the property, and we, we'd make a little bit on it, and we would know that the transaction would be complete. But spending money on an appraisal, that close to that public vote threshold, is, is a gamble. And we're not talking a huge amount of money, but in my opinion, six hundred or a thousand dollars is, I'm not willing to flush that away and gamble that away.
Can I ask you a couple questions, and I don't mean to put you in a hot spot here, but, okay, let's just say we get an appraisal. Let's go out and get it. If it comes in at over fifty thousand, we don't have to sell that property. Am I right or wrong?
Yeah, you're right, but we wouldn't be able to unless we go out for an appraisal.
Okay, but I'm just saying, we wouldn't have to sell it.
If we, if we went out and appraised it, you're right.
If tomorrow, or next board meeting, that appraiser, that purchaser walked in here with three appraisals on three pieces of property, one is ours, and he said, "This is what I propose to you," we don't have to accept that. We don't have, just because he did an appraisal, we don't have to trade with him, we don't have to sell to him. And that's all I'm saying. Good business would say, he would present us with those options and with the data needed to make the decision. We don't have the data to make the decision. We're sitting here talking about, "What if it appraises at this, or what if it appraises at that?" We have nothing to vote on. I mean, and earlier you said, "But if he does the appraisal, we'd have to trade." No, we don't, unless we sign this agreement. Unless we sign this agreement, we don't have to do that.
Under, under that example, you're correct, if you were to walk in and simply say, "Here's, here's three property values, here's an actual appraisal on your piece of property," you know, we wouldn't have to, but if we were going to actually move on an official land swap deal-
That's what I was getting at. If we move on this, we're locking ourselves into a no option.
Correct. But ultimately, we would have to, even if he came to us with three appraisals and we liked what we saw, we still would have to act on an official action item. We would still have to go out and get an official appraisal, and for some reason, if that official appraisal came back and it was anything different than what those three proposals were, we're bound by that official appraisal, not what they presented to us.
Right.
That's my only concern. Anybody can go on Zillow or wherever, or go to a Realtor and say, "Here's three properties of comparable value or comparable size, here are my comps," and you look at it and you like what you see, but until that official document comes in that you bought and paid for, it's, you have to go by that official, that official document. And in this situation, like I mentioned before, I think that we're so close to the fifty thousand dollar mark that it would be up to you to, to vote that in. We have six hundred dollars there, but it'll be awfully close to running the risk that, that we bought a six hundred dollar appraisal that I'm going to file in a filing cabinet, and it'll-
Well, that's why I asked my-
It'll look good in the filing cabinet, but we, we're not going to be able to move forward with it.
That's why I asked my question. Have we been sitting around in the back room discussing what we're going to do with that property? Because if we haven't, then we shouldn't get an appraisal, we should forget. If we have been considering what we're going to do with the property, that's a whole different situation.
But I understand what you're saying, that originally, when, when the real, the agent came in, it would have been nice, had she come in with an appraisal-
Oh, yes, that's what I'd have done, as a businessman, I'd have done it.
You know what I'm saying? I understand what you're saying, but that's just not, they know the law, and they know-
Yeah, they taught us-
How the land swap law works, so.
Asking us to vote on something we have no data on.
But I think they're making improvements to that whole area, and I just don't think it-
There was a major development going on across this street.
Yeah, I don't think it makes sense to do anything right now, I really don't.
You'd believe that a year and that property would be worth some money.
The look it's been going to cost us in money to have an election.
But I believe that to that point, and you're talking about plans and development plans, then that's where you look at the other vacant pieces of property-
Right.
-around this city, and you start to-
Think about it.
Kind of say, "Hey, we're going to, we're going to look at these three parcels, or two parcels, to put that out to public vote and then sell it." Now you're looking, that eighty thousand dollars that you had to pay to, to put this on the ballot, you're going to, you're going to recoup that and, and much more, if you, if you have valuable pieces of property there to sell.
That's all I'm saying, is right now, we don't have to make a decision.
This, this tiny little lot is not-
And that lot is in a position right now where it's not going to lose any money.
Yeah, I don't think it's going to go down.
Okay.
If it does, it would be donation to begin with.
What did you say?
If it does, it would be donation to begin with.
If it moves far enough down, we got the word for fifty thousand.
Right.
That's why you're bad. I agree, however, that street is only building right now. Property keeps selling for higher and higher amounts and higher and lower.
Especially properties that sit right in the middle of three other properties only by one.
Item six point seven is our vouchers to next year's pens and auxiliary pens. Are you having any questions for Mr. Mario Mills?
Can I just draw your attention to that first sentence there? The vouchers will, for February and March will be presented in April. Because of the, having to move this meeting up because of spring break, our voucher obviously just ended, our, our last voucher run ended on the twenty-eighth of February, and then to try to get all of that information in time for Terry to put this in your packet, it wasn't going to work. So we'll, we'll present both, those two months vouchers next month.
I have a question. I always see you have a question. Um, the high school, I see this would be of, of the summary-
Is it student activities or auxiliary?
It's, um, student. It's, it's, it's auxiliary. It's like page four of, but, but they're on the page, they're groups of pages, I'm trying to find the name of, oh, it's under auxiliary, so it's auxiliary. Um, page four, parking fees, what is that called? Parking capital?
It's for security, isn't it?
No, security's up higher. I thought I saw-
FSP capital, is that what you're saying?
Uh, it's called parking fees, and the security service is just three down, there's no expenditures there. There's something towards the bottom called parking capital. What is that?
Yeah, I'll have to, I'll have to check into that. You talk about the twenty thousand?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have to look into that.
It's probably where, right now, they're taking out the security guards, and later in the year, maybe they'll balance out those accounts, but it just didn't make any sense. I have no idea what that is, unless you resurface the word in the high school.
So my, my understanding, just from some recent conversations, is that the, the amount sits in parking permits, you see that thirty-nine thousand?
Yep.
And then there are charges made to those other, but they're not actually removed from the thirty-nine thousand until the end.
No, I know that, but I just don't know what parking capital is.
I'll find, I'll find that out.
Gotcha. I apologize.
Oh, no, I, I had to look at it for a while, and that was the, because I know what that fund is, it's for a lot of important things. And that was all I could-
Capital tends to refer to, you know, something that, more of a structure-
I know.
Something like that, so I'll have to, I'll have to look at it.
Do you know how much the parking permits cost?
I think there's two different prices, one underneath the solar and one not, that I don't know off the top of my head what they are right now.
I think it's twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
Forty-five.
Is it fifty though, under the solar?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Solar panels making us money.
Is that mostly staff under the apartment?
No.
They offer it to seniors first, I believe, and then they go down the pecking order.
So we have students who are not, that they're not worried all about spending fifty dollars, so.
Well, mom, yeah, you're probably not.
J O B is for-
That's right.
Oh, oh, you know, you can't be on the-
And that money goes to security?
Currently, yeah.
You can buy cameras, stuff, but anything to do with security, probably, I think you can, can you pay security, guys, out of that? Yeah. So it's a really important fund.
Yeah, schools change, huh?
All right. Last item is informational items, and under the superintendent, there's a note that we will be, there will be no changes in the athletic participation fees for next year, so the high school and the middle school will remain the same. And then we do have a report from educational services as well as special services. If you have any questions there. I do want to share, if I may, that Mrs. Kloschner, passed out some information on the case of Assembly and Award Ceremony, and the April seventeenth date is a board meeting night.
Did she give you two dates?
Yes, April twelfth and April seventeenth.
Okay. I see. No, she, I'm on pace, and she wasn't sure what the dates were last time she talked to me.
Starline is on the top. Shannon, you're, you, you participated in that program?
Yes.
I'm not sure about the procedure. Can I put out an information item real quick? I just want everybody to know it'll be out of pocket for the next six days. We're taking our first vacation in fifteen years, and so don't try to reach me, because I won't answer.
I'm going to call every day, just to see.
Make sure you don't answer.
There's, there's nothing more special than coming back from vacation for a full voicemail.
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
Actually, that is, that is an appropriate announcement, an update under item four in our general.
However, Terry can set you up to telephone by next Tuesday night.
Oh, I'll be back, just in time.
Oh, you will? Oh.
I timed it, so I'll be back.
Seven minutes, very good.
That was thoughtful, Alan.
Well, I was originally going to miss these meetings, and then I said, "No, we'll just hang in there."
All right, well, we have a governing board meeting right after this, a special session scheduled to start in about ten minutes, and anybody who's leaving March thirteenth, six P M is our regularly scheduled governing board meeting. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I second it.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Ellen Ward?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Aston?
Yes.